Hello my friends, this is Andy Falco, Jimenez coming to you live from Yorblon, California. And we're going to be talking about this last Tuesday, the school board meeting. There were two, one was a special meeting at 4:30. Not going to talk about that one much because nothing really happened. I did record it, that video is on my Facebook page or Vote PyL Vote. It was some nonsense about the Brown Act. Of course, they're gonna, just like everything else in this country right now, is that you have the people who actually are doing something wrong attacking the people that care and claiming that they're doing something wrong. And that's pretty much what that 4:30 meeting was about is to make accusations about two of the school board members who have been fighting for our kids and fighting for parents. And a few, oh, just a few people have decided that that they're going to use that opportunity to attack them. Whenever you do something right these days, that's for kids, somebody hates it. I don't know what it is about our, our, or these, some of the members of the school board and school district that are in the job that we thought, many of us parents, thought that you had to take if you cared about what, what kids, you know, were learning in school and how they were going to learn. It's shocking that we have, we have a teachers' union, we have a, probably a small amount, but a number of teachers that want to do everything they can to harm the kids, including two school board members in particular and another that's kind of on the fence. And then apparently now also, you know, just more of this district superintendent that, that I even thought so. The only reason being they allow this stuff to happen and to go on. You think you get a new superintendent in there and then he was going to bring something new and fresh. And now it's still, still the same nonsense. It's, it's all about how we can damage the kids and not educate them. And let's push away any effort to try to educate them. That, that seems to be their focus. All right, so the next part of the day on Tuesday was the school board meeting, the actual school board meeting, where you, again, in the first one, you had a number of people that could get up and speak from the community, public comments is what it's called. And then also in the seven o'clock, which always happens is that you have an agenda, which I showed you in one of the last videos that I did. I showed you how to go to the school board website, go to the, the tab that says Agenda and then print out or read, download the agenda for that particular meeting. And you can see what they're going to be talking about. Now you have the ability during public comment to talk about some of those things that you hope that they will make a decision on and, and, and either not pay for or bring into our schools or support and bring into our schools. And again, and that's another opportunity for teachers to say how, how great the teachers' union is that wants to keep schools closed, keep our kids masked, that want to bring in CRT and LGBTQ and pronouns all into our school. And you have those people that come up and talk about those things. So I'm going to play some videos from the public comment. There was a bunch of stuff that was talked about afterwards that I think is eventually important, but I don't know that I'll get to any of it. One subject is a, a program that teaches kids, well, it claims to teach kids how to play during recess. But that's not what this company is all about. Again, this company that created this system, I guess, of teaching kids how to play is another way of kind of crowbaring in CRT, LGBTQ, genders, pronouns, all this stuff that, again, every way that they can look to get it into our schools, they're going to try. And of course, they voted yes, the three nimlets that are on the, on the school board. Just regarding what the community wants, the parents want, who want, do not want it in our schools. They disregarded that and voted for it to be allowed in our school. Again, spending money on something that we as parents did not want. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to get through a couple of things here first before we go. And I just want to lay a foundation or groundwork that you need to be listening for on these videos that I'll be playing of people speaking and, and really understand the difference between a, one group and another, because it's really important. Because you can see how and why parents have, have found it really important to show up to the school board meetings. Because again, the teachers, again, a few of them, not all of them, but enough of them, the, the, the teachers' union and a couple of the school board members have no interest in educating or bringing up the scores, which again are below 50%. That, that, that's, that's where they like to be and where they want to keep the kids for whatever reason. And anytime we want to do something to move forward to increase the education of the kids, we get blocked. And so first you need to understand that there are a portion of the citizens that are in this country and in our community who love being useful idiots. And we know that. And these are people that purposefully are uninformed, purposefully uninformed. I wanted to repeat that. Or believe everything they are told by celebrities, liberal newscasters, personalities and far left politicians, that, that is where, that's the world they live in. They have no, they have no supporting information, they have no scientific data, they have no studies that they can show to support any of their arguments, whether it has to do with COVID or whether it has to do with why kids should be taking hormone blockers to cutting off their penises or breasts and why they shouldn't have to tell their parent. They have nothing to support why that is good, but argue that it is. And it's because they, they choose and purposefully have decided they want to be uninformed or they just simply want to for whatever reason. Maybe they think they're doing the right thing, but they're echoing some of these speaking points that they get from celebrities and liberal newscasters and news channels and know nothing how to argue their point through data research and studies. That again, if they did that, they would find that their argument is flawed. And, 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 and there is no argument in, in many cases. There are also a number of people who love being a victim. I know that I was a police officer 21 years. There were many people in our community that were often victims. They were often calling the police. Just as we often saw the same bad guys all the time, we would often see the same victims. But there are a number of people that not in relationship to crime, but there are people that just love being a victim. It gives them relevance in their self-created sadness. Quite often they're people who were children who learned that if they whine and cry about their circumstances or feelings, that they will get attention from their parents or their grandparents or aunts and uncles, brothers and sisters. They look for opportunities to be offended or threatened and they just simply never grow out of it. And boy, do we have a number of those people that come up to the podium or that we see at, you know, different events that they just simply love being a victim, that everybody's after them, that it's dangerous world out there, they walk around scared. If somebody looks at them, it's, they're looking at them because they want them to be dead. I'm telling you that there, there are far too many of these people out there. And I wish I could help them, I pray for them, I, it's sad. I can't imagine living in that world where every day you have to complain. You have to complain. If you live in a two-story house, you're complaining about that you have to walk up the stairs. If, if you, if you live in California, you complain about the heat. If you complain, if you moved underneath an airport, you're complaining about the airplanes flying over. I mean, it's really, you know, you go, but listen, you know, I tell my kids, when I, you know, one of my kids, they are not one of my kids, but my kids know that I hate complainers. I mean, they just want to complain about everything. If you get in the car and tell me you're tired, I go, who's not tired these days? When you have, I mean, people, there are people that are tired, they're actually working and digging ditches. You're telling me you're tired from going to school? I don't want to hear that you're tired. I want to hear what you learned. I want to hear, you know, what positive thing happened. If you constantly are telling yourself how tired you are all the time, you're going to be tired. Let's talk about what, what energizes you, what makes you happy, what makes you laugh? What was it at school that made you really think and come up with something, you know, maybe some unique thing in, in the creation of a project? You know, I don't want to hear how you're hot and tired. It's hot, it's 100 degrees outside, everybody's hot. Why is the first thing that you come into the car and tell me that you're hot? I know this sounds like I'm ranting, I am, but they know. And so this is obviously a thing with me. But man, do we have people that just cannot live in a, in a world without being upset or angry or scared or worried or, or just feel like they're victimized on every aspect of their life. It doesn't matter what color they are, they will be a victim whether they are rich or not. It just, they're just people that simply want to complain. That is their life, living in a complaint. But we have to deal with those. There, there are some of the people that are the loudest, that force us to make changes because of this issue. And again, it's always the few, it is the few who complain the most and the loudest. Again, I as a police officer, 21 years, most often or not, the people that would, that we would end up having to go on a call over another call is because it was the person that was the victim who complained the most that we would end up going because they called the most. And so we would go out there. And then there's flat out lunatics. We know that we have those and we've, we've seen them. We've seen them over the last couple of years, or the people who love to do things like mask their kids. Does the craziest thing as parents that I see them masking their kids. You know, I still see it today. You can go to, especially if you go to Target or if you go to Tokyo Central. And depends on the city too. If you go into some cities where there's a Target or a Walmart, there's way more masks. But the thing is that these parents are masking their little kids, little kids. As we know, everybody knows, the scientific studies are out there ever since the beginning. We knew that the most vulnerable were the elderly, the obese and people with compromised immune systems. Those are the people that were dying, those were the people that were getting the sick the most, but it wasn't healthy children. Healthy children were not getting sick, but yet you see still to this day, and I see, I see kids that are like 19, 18, 19 years old at Starbucks or at Trader Joe's and they're still wearing a mask. Who, it's, who, who, who raised these kids? And so they're still doing it. Where was I? Sorry, got another rant there. And then they force the kids to take vaccines when they were not dying from it. Again, they're getting, they're giving somebody a medicine that they don't need that obviously doesn't work because keep people that are, have double doses and double boosters, they're still getting it. And yet they're forcing their kids to take something that's an experimental drug that we can see is causing problems. And these are also people that are, so sorry. They want to allow a 10-year-old to cut off his penis or a teenage girl to cut off her breasts because she feels like maybe I'm not a boy or he's not a boy anymore, that he's a girl or the girls are not, are now boys. And so, and they want them to do it without parents knowing about it. These are lunatics. We have them in Sacramento, we have them as politicians, we have them again in our school district. And these are the people that we are hearing the most from and are making our lives difficult. And so when we have a portion of our community that are useful idiots, that are, and other people that are, love to be a victim. And then we have just generally some lunatics or some people are all three. We, these are the things that we are fighting against. And that's why as parents, as tired as you are of hearing about it or what have you, if you have kids that are in the school district, you need to show up because we need to show that there's far more parents who do not want any of this stuff. We simply want our kids to be taught how to, how to, how to count, how to read, how to write, how to think, the proper US history, the proper world history, which is the truth. And these other things just must simply be out, left out of our, of our schools. And then I want to address something else that's really important. And, and that is there's, there seems to be just a couple of people, not very many, but there's a couple of people that have this sudden fear of Christians. And how this has come up is because it's, we've made it known that at least a couple, the, the two gentlemen that are running for school board that you must elect, which is Todd Frazier and Rich Engel, along with two other members of the school board they're on, they happen to be Christian. And we've talked about how, how we think it's awesome because we know how, how important it is to have morals and rules in any organization. And so that, that's always been the message. We have never, we have never, none of us, nobody that I know of in any aspect of, of a Christian that either attends the school or is running for school board, is on the school board, has ever said that we want to turn the public schools, any of them, especially in the Placentia Yorblon Unified School, into Christian schools. Nobody's ever said that. I, I would love to have my kids in Christian school, number one, it's expensive. But I do fear that they would also be in an environment that's only going to give them one experience. Again, this is, this could be controversial, you could be looking at me and saying as a Christian, that's not right. But there is a little bit of me that if I stay strong and teach my children what I think are good, sound biblical values, that they will either continue in the faith of Christianity or they will still operate under the understanding of how important it is to, maybe if they're not Christian or choose not to be Christian, they're still going to operate on a day-to-day basis under biblical values of morals, of following rules, of treating people equally, of loving other people, loving your neighbor as you love yourself. All the important rules of being a Christian, I think are important. And that's what's important when I think, when I'm thinking of who I want personally to elect for some of the school board, not that we're going to turn El Dorado School into a Christian school. That has never, ever come out of my mouth or anybody else's mouth. And you're going to have some people that are going to get up on that podium and they're going to say things like, oh, they want to turn it into a Christian. No, nobody's ever said that. I love the diversity of our school. I especially love the diversity of El Dorado. It is an amazingly diverse school. And I love that my son currently and my oldest daughter went to El Dorado and made some great friends and got to meet some people of different cultures, of different religions, different sexual desires, whatever that, whatever you want to call that. Who knows what it's called now? That they were able to go to school, learn, play sports, have fun and maintain what it is that they have is their values regardless of what was going on in the school. Because we want to make sure that they're teaching kids how to read, write, count and proper history, whether it's the world history, history of the United States. I think I covered that, that I didn't read the paragraph that I wrote, but basically that's what I wanted to say. You're going to hear it come up and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to talk about it again. And then so let's look at why the United States of America is the greatest country in the world, why it is the least racist of all countries, why it is the most generous country in the world and why it is always the first country that sends help to any country that needs it during a disaster. Why? Because again, as I said just a few minutes ago, it was built on biblical values. And people will deny it and they will tell you that that's not true. But every major corporation, every country that is built based on biblical values always succeeds and becomes a, a better country for other countries. Again, without the United States of America, this world is going to be in a deep world of caca if the United States falls. United States, because of how we are built, our biblical values, it was built on such a strong foundation that we have kept the world mostly, not all at peace. And of course, we go to war, of course, we have to go in and help other countries. But it, it's kept a lid on most of it for the most part. And let me just read you a couple of, some quotes in case anybody decides that this is not true. Just a couple of quotes right now, right from the Declaration of Independence that says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights." That's always hard for me to say. "Rebellion to tyrants is obedience to God," said Benjamin Franklin, John Adams and Thomas Jefferson, proposal for the Great Seal of the United States. "God who gave us life, gave us liberty. Can the liberties of a nation be secure when we have removed a conviction that these liberties are the gift of God?" Indeed, a terrible, a tremble, sorry, for my country. I tremble for my country when I reflect that God is just, that his justice cannot sleep forever. Thomas Jefferson wrote that. I'm going to go down, there's a whole bunch. Another one is from Benjamin Franklin that says, "Freedom is not a gift bestowed upon us by other men, but a right that belongs to us by the laws of God in nature." And I'm pretty sure if I remember right, Benjamin Franklin wasn't a particularly biblical man, but he said that. George Washington said, "It is impossible," this is the most important one, that's why I left it for last, "it is impossible to rightly govern a nation without God and the Bible." That is the basis for our country. All right, one last thing, if I can. One thing you need to remember as I go through some of these videos is that once more, and you must remember that the Placentia Yorblon Unified School District has banned on, has a ban on the teaching of CRT, which is Critical Race Theory. But you have to remember that DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion, is CRT. We, we, everybody knows that, it's not a secret. We've discussed it all through, as we were getting up to the point where we could vote down CRT in our schools here at Placentia Yorblon Unified School District. But DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, is also CRT. So anytime you hear a teacher talking about it, you know that they are going against what it is that we have banned in our schools. Our schools should be all for equality, yes, but equity is banned. Here is a slide that will help you understand the differences, oops, sorry. Understand the difference between the two and that is equality seeks to protect individual rights regardless of race. That's exactly what, what we want. We always want that, we want that in our schools. Equity seeks to divide the world into competing racial groups and ensure race-based equality of outcomes. That is not what we want. And it endorses an active racial discrimination to get there. That is equity, which we do not want in our schools. And you're going to hear some teachers talking about equity and diversity, equity, inclusion, which again, it has been banned, but regardless of that, here are, you're going to hear a couple of teachers that are going to bring it up in different ways. So here's, and, and so just to lay a foundation for the first, I think it's the three or four videos that I'm going to show you are people that spoke, these are teachers. Understand that teachers' unions, whether it's California Teachers Association or Apple, which I forget what the acronym is for, that's the districts of teachers' union, are, and Apple is a member of California Teachers Association, CTA, that they were the ones who kept our schools closed beyond what we as parents wanted them closed and what we knew was scientifically necessary. They should have never been closed. Every study that is out there now shows that none of that worked. Either did the separation by sex feet, six feet, or the masking. None of those things actually effectively stopped anything. Parents knew that, we told you that, we were reading the studies, we were paying attention to the research and we told you that that was going to work. But teachers' unions decided to ignore that. Randy Weingarten, which is also a president of the National Teachers Union, which I'm, I'm sure CTA is also a part of, has fought the opening of schools since the beginning. And it would still have schools closed if she, if, if, if she had her way, even though now she comes out from time to time and says, oh, I wanted schools to open up a long time ago. And again, these people have no problem lying, that's why you need God in schools. Because these people have no problem lying, they have no, they have nobody to account for in their lies. And so they have no problem lying and telling you a flat ass lie right in your face. And so these are the, so these are the teachers' unions. The teachers' unions want CRT in every school, they want this equity, which divides everybody by race. It teaches white kids that they're oppressors and every minority kid that they are oppressed and they need to be fearful. Again, reinforcing that they need to be living as fearful people, inadequate, inadequate people, that they're held down by somebody else, which is the opposite of what you want to teach kids. That's what teachers' unions are for, that's what universities and colleges are teaching our kids. And so when you hear a teacher say, "We are Apple." We are essentially a teacher say, "I am for the closing of schools, the, the sexualization of kids through sex education, inappropriate sex education, that I'm for masking, that I'm for dividing children into separate races." So every time you hear a teacher saying that they are the, the union, that they are Apple, that they are CTA, this, they're telling you, right? They, they are telling you who they are. And this is what I love about the, the video and the recordings of these meetings because you hear them say it, you hear them say, you also hear them a little confused. Now they done, now that I told them and had, we had that one teacher a couple of weeks ago, sorry, I'm going to get to these videos in a second, is that when you, we had the teacher saying how horrible it was being a teacher, that it was the hardest job in the world and she whined about her job. And I said, then what, then why do you support the teachers' union? If the teachers' unions are so great, why do you hate your job and hate being a teacher? It makes no sense. So now of course they come in and now they want to talk about how great their, how great the job of being a teacher is. It is hysterical. And so that's how you know that they're not, you know, they're, they're not sincere about their position because they're, they're willing to change it depending on what it is that you are hearing and what it is they want you to believe or think. And this is what they, they love, this is what they do to kids too. They want to teach them to think something or to believe something, not to really understand their stance, not to really truly believe that it's necessary to teach kids how to read, write, count and think. Right, they, they, they want to, they want power, they want to have these things pushed in, but if they can do it by lying to you, they'll do that too. One day they'll tell you that they hate their job and oh, that didn't, that didn't work. And the next day they're telling you how great their job is. That's what I love about video and about doing these shows is that I can show you their hypocrisy, an overused word, but clearly there's some hypocrisy, hypocrisy here. Because again, just a couple of meetings ago, they were telling you how much they hated their job and how horrible it was. But then I pointed out then, then why do you like the teachers' unions? So here's the first one, here you go.
And I'm going to talk a little bit about Apple, which by the way, I am an Apple rep and it, they never actually ever tell us that you hate teachers. So that's not anything that goes on there. And the other thing that people seem very confused about with unions and Apple members that all the teachers are Apple members, we are Apple. So when you say that Apple is bad, really what you're saying is that all of the teachers in this, that are members of Apple, we're bad, we're all bad people and doing bad things. And we're not, we're good people, we want what's best for children. We're not doing this job because it's, it's easy or fun. It is fun, but not because it's easy, but because we care about children, we care about our community. I've been doing this job for 35 years. You don't do something for 35 years if you're not devoted and you weren't born to do it and you're not called to do it. But we are all Apple.
Yeah, believe her when she tells you that she is all Apple. She's all Apple. And just because you've been doing something for a very long time, it's hard to be fired as a teacher. It's hard to be fired as a police officer, I know this. That you can actually be horrible at your job and still maintain your job. Just because you, you are at it for a long time, doesn't mean you're good at it. And when she says that she's Apple, believe her when she says it. And again, I told you what Apple's for and what the CTA is for, which Apple is a part of CTA. And that is for all the things that we've been fighting against as parents. They, they, not once do they get up there and talk about how it is that they want to, to bring up. You never hear them say it, that you hear them saying how great the kids are doing, how good the schooling is. And it's not, it's below, we're well below as a nation where we're below. We're like 25th in the world, something like that, 25th, 26th in the world in education of all these countries. There are some shithole countries that are doing, I'm sorry, that are doing a hell of a lot better than ours, than our schools and we're the United States of America, the richest country on the planet. We are 25th and again, we may be worse than that, I don't know what it is now, but we may be the worst. And, and here she says, you believe, you hear that she is these teachers' union that is trying to destroy our schools. And again, just because she tells you she's been doing it for a very long time does not mean she's good at it. She's, she likes trying to indoctrinate the kids quite possibly. I don't know who she is, she's not one of my kids' teachers, thank God. I know my teachers, I met them all, I have questions about a couple of my teachers. My teachers, my kids' teachers. And that's why I found it so important, I missed the school board meeting because I went to the back to school. Why? Because I want to see here, look in the classroom, see who the teachers are and, and evaluate what, what kind of teacher my, I'm sending my kid to see every day. It's important for me to do that. And, and if we have time, we're already running out of time and I just got started. But it's so important, it's so important to evaluate the teachers that your kids are going to see on a daily basis. And, and, and this teacher, she is Apple, she is the teachers' union. So understand who she is and what she believes in. She believes in all the things I just shared with you because we know what the teachers' unions believe in. They tell you, they tell you on their website. All right, here's another one.
I would like to express my appreciation for the people who have worked alongside me and who have helped make this district one that I am proud to have served for 23 years. I'd like to thank the parents and guardians of our kids who have supported our public schools throughout the years, but most notably during the pandemic. Thank you for respecting us and encouraging a positive homeschool connection. Your trust binds this community where our children thrive and stay hopeful about their future. I would also like to thank school board trustees Buck and Freeman for your leadership and being longstanding parts of our great reputation. Thank you both, along with trustee Anderson, for sharing numerous accounts of the great things happening in our classrooms each meeting and giving our kids the spotlight to shine. our kids the spotlight to shine. Finally, I would like to thank Linda Mannion, who has a heart of gold. Our union is made of devoted teachers who are part of this community. Thank you for supporting our families by supporting our teachers. I am lucky to be a teacher in this community as well as a parent with kids at our award-winning schools. It is an honor to work with devoted people like you, who throughout the years have worked tirelessly to give our kids the education they deserve. Thank you.
Are you noticing the similarity between these teachers? Listen, they are not getting the education they deserve. That, that final line is exactly the opposite. Again, we can show you the stats of how poorly educated our kids are being educated. They are not getting the education they deserve, at least not my kids and not your, your kids, whoever is watching, is that your kids are not getting the education. That is why we're there. Again, we can, and she thinks Buck and Freeman, who are the, the most inadequate, incompetent people that have been on the school board for decades, I think, decades, plural, because they, they, they will show you, listen, hold on, I have a graphic here. You have, this is Buck. She says enrollment is declining in our district and has been for many, many years. It's been declining for many years. When our average daily attendance ADA was dipping below 96%, I initiated the Everyday Counts campaign to increase our average daily attendance. For the last two years, we have not had to also, we've had, we have not had to also make significant cuts to, I think that's good English. I'm not sure, cuts to our district budget and programs because of the success of this advocacy to our legislators and governors. Now, up until maybe two years ago, when Leander Blades and Sean Youngblood, much, not much was changing. She admits that over years, the, it has been declining. Why? Because they have not been educating our kids. She was the one who was in power or in the school board and her and Freeman and a couple of other liberals. And the education has been declining. We are below 50%. And who is the common, common denominator in all of these issues regarding our schools? Buck and Freeman. And so what the, the last teacher, the happy teacher, I entitled that, that, that video, is that she's, she's painting this, this glowy aspect of what she's trying to lie to you about, that the school is, the kids are thriving, she said. They are not thriving. They are having difficulties. They are, they are struggling. Their, their scores are well below the average of not only the world, but of the United States. They are below 50% in the, sometimes in the 40s and 30 percentile in some of the, the areas of education. So they are not thriving. She is wrong. And who does she praise? The president, Linda, Linda, whatever her name is, and the teachers' union. Again, right back, back to where I told you to listen for, they are who they say they are, and that is the teachers' union, who is and, and, and has been destroying much of our education over the last several years. All right, here's another teacher. I forget what this one's titled. You know, I'm going to skip that one. I'll come back to it to another, another time. It's a, it's a teacher, or not a teacher, it's an aide who came up and said, why do we not have enough aides to help out? It's important to understand this, too. We just paid $630,000, I think it was, for an online program that all the kids hate. All the kids hate. I have teachers that have told me they hate it. And yet we paid 630 grand for an online program that does nothing except for it does have LGBTQ characters in it, and it does have CRT aspects to it. But they paid 630 grand for it, but they're not hiring aides to help out, to help around in the classrooms, based on what the woman that, that came up and spoke. She works and she's an aide. And she goes, there's not enough of us. We're not getting paid enough to do it. We have to take on a second job, second and third job, in order to do the things that we want to do, and that is to help the kids. And yet there's not enough of us and you don't pay us enough. But yet they'll give 630 grand to an online program. All right, here's another teacher. This one you're gonna love.
This is Carla Jones. I'm a 26-year veteran of the district, all of them at Kramer Middle School. Thank you for your visit. And we'd love to put pickleball courts in, since I've been teaching it for 25 years at Kramer. I also thank you for your shout out for the coaches. We're out there sweating and taking care of those kids. My pronouns are she and her. I am a happy, excited teacher to be at Kramer because of the diversity and because every student counts and is welcome there. Doesn't matter how you identify, what you identify, whether you're gay, ELD, RSP, SDC, you have an IEP, a 504, you're in physical education, or an elite athlete on an independent program, you are loved and accepted at Kramer. I hope the rest of our district can get that way. I also want to say thank you as our Healthy Youth Act educator at Kramer for the last 25 years, that you are looking into kids getting vaccinated and/or drugged at schools. That was appalling to me to hear, as well as the potential of there being planned parenthoods on campus. Please look into that as well, as that is definitely not appropriate, although following the Healthy Youth Act law is important. Thank you.
Well, she almost had me there at the end. But again, here you got somebody that's talking about pronouns. Again, I've sent an email to the school. You guys have heard about that on my shows. I've sent two emails regarding pronouns and boys dressing in the girls locker room, girls dressing in the boys locker room, boys using girls bathrooms. It's not going to stop until we, we get people voted in to the school board like Todd Frazier and Rich Engel. It will not stop until that happens. It's just such nonsense. I think she said Kramer Middle School is where she teaches. I'm so happy my kids don't go to Kramer Middle School. She's probably happy about that, too. But this has no place. This has no place in our schools. It's causing confusion. It's causing anxiety and depression with kids. And again, I can take you to all the studies and showed you all the studies. If you go back three or four videos when I, when I discussed it, if you want the email that I sent the school, I sent them the studies, understanding that most children who say that they're confused about their gender when they're teenagers or even younger than teenagers, 80% of those children on their own will revert back to a clear understanding that they are the sex they were born. And that it, this, 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 this idea that they can start giving them hormone blockers and, and having them have surgeries to cut off parts of their body without parents' permission when they're still in school is horrendous, and it, people should be arrested for these, these types of things. It is, it is just simply nonsense. All right. Wow, I'm, I'm so sorry. I hope that I can get through all these videos, but there's a bunch and I want to get through as many as possible. So here's another teacher really quick. Remember what I said about the equity and inclusion, diversity, equity, inclusion. Oh, thank you for some comments. Hold up really quick. Let me see. Hey Jess, nice to see you. You tell Amanda I'm in flight coming home. Thanks, Jess. Glad you joined from Chicago. Oh my gosh, are you okay? Glad you survived. All right, here's a teacher.
Hi, my name is Shani Murray, and I just want to thank the district for putting together a diversity, equity, and inclusion calendar for this school year, starting with Hispanic Heritage Month. I saw this celebrated on the district website, and at my home school, I saw artist Frida Kahlo and baseball player Roberto Clemente recognized on social media. I know Dr. Adamson worked with a group of teachers on special assignment over the summer to create the calendar, and more importantly, a repository of district resources that teachers and staff can pull from each month to share related content at schools and in classrooms. I hope this becomes a widely used resource, and I look forward to seeing Pyl's monthly celebrations of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not 100% sure she was a teacher. I think maybe she might just been a parent, but it's possible that I got that one wrong. So sorry. But do you hear the words, diversity, equity, inclusion? That is CRT. That has been banned in our school. If we do in fact have a calendar for diversity, equity, and inclusion, then we need to do something about it. We need to have an investigation. Somebody needs to be suspended or fired because that we have a strict rule against diversity, equity, and inclusion, AKA CRT. Now, that's not to say that we can't have a Hispanic Heritage Month at, at the school, serving, you know, you know, the foods of the different South American countries at, you know, at, at lunchtime, or, you know, have a day where people dress up in the, in the, you know, in the, the, with the different countries. Sometimes I can't think of what, what they're called, the different countries, or, you know, or certain dances, what have you. I mean, we have the aloha dance at the El Dorado School, and we have a bunch of other things that I'm sure are, are equal. Those are all, all perfectly fine. There's nothing wrong with that, but that's not diversity, equity, and inclusion. Black Heritage Month, or whatever it's called, Black History Month, is fantastic. It's great to understand who in the black community have brought to the, to our history, to, to our everyday living, an invention, or some type of system of farming. What is it? George Washington Carver and the peanuts. I learned that when I was in school. All these things are fantastic. Great, you know, Italians and great Polish people and great Scandinavian people. I'm sure they've all done great stuff. We'll have a month for everybody. Those are, those are great things. But when you bring in diversity, equity, inclusion, that's something completely different. So if there is a calendar that is for diversity, equity, and inclusion, that is a problem considering that we've banned CRT. So let's make sure that that, I'm glad that woman brought that up. At least I think she's a woman. I think I can use that. I'm pretty sure she's a woman. I'm guessing that that's still okay. Who knows? You know, we have a Supreme Court justice who doesn't know what the woman is, but who am I? Thank you, Jess. He, Jess says he appreciates the recapping of the meeting, and thank you. And say survive Chicago for three days, ready to get back at it. Sending you the very best. Thank you, Jess. I appreciate that. All right. So I'm going to get rid of that one. All right. Mud slinging. This is, I'm pretty sure this is a teacher, too. And so let's hear what this one, this is, she's on fire. She has something to say about Leandra Blades and Sean Youngblood. And let's hear, let's hear what she has to say about them.
My name is Raquel. I am a parent and a teacher. I'm here to speak because I'm disappointed in the way some trustees of this board have chosen to conduct business. Not only have two trustees violated the laws that govern the board, but they have zero interest in actually providing our students with high-quality education or services. In fact, one trustee chose to spend her time interviewing with extremist right-wing press agencies to politicize and fracture the board, neither of which helps provide teachers or students the support and tools they need for academic success. If trustee Blades was actually interested in supporting our students and teachers, she would spend less time mud-swinging, using her national party politics, and more time uniting the board to focus on the actual work necessary for our students in our district to obtain the high-quality education and services they deserve. Additionally, you cannot be for teachers, but against the union, which 92% of our teachers are a part of, especially during a teacher shortage fueled by a lack of support. Thank you.
All right. So all of that, I don't mind people, if somebody doesn't like somebody else, they're happy, I'm happy to have them. I have nothing to do with it. They, I'm happy to hear them come up and talk about what they feel about a person. But obviously, she came up as a representative of the union and saying, again, you can't hate the union and not hate teachers, which is completely wrong. There are members, I was a member of the Anaheim Police Department Union. I didn't agree with everything the union did. As a matter of fact, at some point, I left the union for that reason, because it was not, it was not an organization that I felt that was backing up the, the men and women in blue on the street. That, that was my belief. So what did I do? I left. But there's a lot of people that also disagreed, but they never left. They just continued to stay because they figured maybe at some point I'm going to need the union, or the union needs to negotiate for my contract. And so they, they say, that it is hogwash to believe that if you are against the union, that you hate the teachers. That is false. We, again, are talking about a union that we know for sure who has said that parents are terrorists. They sent a letter and, and they worked with, the FBI conspired was the word I was looking for. They conspired with the FBI and the Department of Justice to go against the parents so that they could have a weapon against parents showing up at school board meetings. It was the teachers' unions who did that. And that, and so with a teachers' union that attacks parents in that way, that does nothing to, to truly protect children physically and mentally, and does everything they can to damage them physically and mentally, of course, parents are not going to like the union. So we can hate the union and still love many of the teachers. I love many of the teachers. I love a lot of the, the majority of the teachers that my kids go to school. Again, I have five kids in the school district. I've met just about every one of the teachers that they go through, and maybe only two or three I question whether they should be teachers of my children or not. Three out of all the kids. And that's with three kids, one of them in junior high, which has multiple teachers, and two in high school that has multiple teachers. So that's, that's not too bad, considering I have two, that, two teachers that I really don't care about. All right. So that's not bad. So it's ridiculous. That's a ridiculous statement. Everything else, I don't care if you, what, if you love land or hater, I could care less. But it really has to do with that statement at the end that says that if we hate unions, then we hate teachers. That's BS. All right, here's a great one. I am, I'm not using any of the speaker's names because I don't know everybody's names, and I don't want to show favoritism by sharing a name that I, because I want to promote one person over another. But we have this one about electric buses, which is really important to understand. Again, why? Because sometimes I question, why is it certain school board members promote certain things? Why is it that they're pushing these things that we know are bad for kids? Why are they pushing these things that have really nothing to do with anything? We, we are more concerned, you're more worried about getting an electric bus than what it is in bringing up the kids' school grade? What does the electric bus have to do with anything? That can wait. We're not in a position right now, or in a place where we need to worry about electric buses right now. You're maybe a big Kamala fan, or whatever, whoever it was that brought up the electric buses. I think it was Kamala, 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 whatever her name is. What, what, what is this? What, what are we spending so much time? But this particular parent has a good reason why Buck was more concerned about electric buses than educating our children. Here we go.
I really want to comment on what you guys are talking about right now, but I'm going to stick to my script. I am concerned about the way and manner that the electric school buses may have entered our school district. I thought it was strange that Carrie Buck pulled item number 15 from the consent calendar in June regarding the seven electric buses for seven cents to publicize it. But now I see on Carrie Buck's campaign signs that she has a Union USW 67 logo out of Carson, California stamped on her signs. This union is a steelworkers' union, but it also mentions electric school bus manufacturing on its website. I noticed that in recent news, this union launched a first-of-its-kind electric bus manufacturing training program along with a company named Proterra. USW was listed as a key partner in another article titled High Road to Electric Bus Manufacturing, and another article announcing Proterra and USW Local 675's Historic Electric Bus Manufacturing. And lastly, I stumbled on a website showing both Proterra and Creative Bus Sales, which is where we purchase these buses, as key sponsors at a recent event. I know Ms. Buck has claimed online that USW Local 675 is where she was able to get the cheapest signs made, and that could very well be true. But honestly, I'd like to see the contract. It wasn't attached to the minutes for the electric buses. And if the union who has stamped their names on her campaign signs has anything to do with it, the district should remove the contract due to a conflict of interest. And if any promises have been made for electric buses in the future by Ms. Buck in exchange for signs, then I want this inquiry on the record. Thank you so much.
There you go. Carrie Buck getting kickback from the electric bus people, the unions? These unions are all connected. Come on. All right, here's another one about Buck.
Next, followed by Linda Cone, followed by Shani Boone. And those are the last three.
I love that she has to announce these people, and then they, they talk about the truth about her corruption and how incompetent she is. Here we go.
Good evening, members of the board and community. Ben Stubbs, a parent of a student here at Placentia Urban Linda School District. On Tuesday, August 10th, the California School Board Association released a video featuring President Buck. And in the video, she stated the following quote, "Of all the accomplishments in the last two years that I take the most pride in, it's really the focus that we had on the students when we came back to school. We were one of the first schools in Orange County to come back. And when we did that by providing a safe space as we could address the needs of the students at the same time." Let me be clear on this. President Buck had nothing to do with our schools coming back to school anytime early, and her voting- schools coming back to school anytime early, and her voting record shows for that. On Tuesday, January 11th of this year, she unilaterally adjourned the meeting, but before that, she made a prescription or prohibited the use of mesh masks, just like that, without consulting the board, without having the board vote on it. And apparently this came from Dr. Clayton Chow of the OC Healthcare Agency. And the last time I checked, he's not a member, a voting member of this board. Last time I checked, he's also not a medical doctor. So this decree that President Buck made without the board's consent, without it being voted on, is very suspicious and it caused a lot of pain for hundreds of students when it came out, when they were kicked to the curb out of school like dogs, like inhumans, like dogs, not worthy of school. So how did that happen? How's that legal? Brown Act violation there?
Yep. Ditto. Alright, let me get to the next one right away here so we can uh, get this moving. Here we go.
Cone taught in public schools for 32 years, also a union member, and I have very mixed feelings about my union. I like to think of Placentia Yorbalinda as an island of safety. I'd like to keep it that way. That's why I want to expand on AB 1184. It mandates that parents insurance pay for sensitive services, which include gender affirming care such as hormone, hormone therapy and invasive surgeries. This is without parent knowledge or consent. And this law went into effect July the 1st of this year. Planned Parenthood and CHOC are eager to provide these services because children and adolescents offer an unlimited market. This is why they and the California State Legislature work together to fund wellness clinics on all school campuses. The California Teachers Union uh, Association prompted this legislation when CTA's Assembly passed a policy resolution advocating government support for these sensitive services, I quote, "without the barrier of parent permission." School boards, you can stop this because you have the power to oversee and limit services that our wellness centers provide. You also have the power to say no to CTA, to Planned Parenthood and any other organization that wants control over our children. Thank you.
Without the barrier, 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 without the barrier of parent consent. So we had the previous speaker talking about Carrie Buck lying on her campaign uh, propaganda. That's the best way, but it, that she had everything to do or had something to do with getting our kids back into school, which she had, she did everything she could not to bring our kids back to school. A, a complete blatant lie. Um, and now we have this issue coming up where if we keep somebody like Carrie Buck and Karen Freeman and um, uh, Anderson, Marilyn Anderson on the board, they, those three will vote to allow kids to have hormone therapy, to have surgery um, without the parents' consent and have it be done through the schools. There's no doubt in my mind. Um, and they can deny it, but they've not shown me anything up to this point that they care about the health of our kids and are looking to support anything the CTA supports, which is that issue which um, she just brought up and many issues just like it. And again, when you hear teachers say that they are the union, that's who they are. And they can, and I love that they kept repeating it. I'll be more than happy to continue to play this stuff that the, the unions and show what the unions support and what they want and what they, how they don't want to protect our kids and how they want parents to stay out of everything. And then the teachers say that's who we are. The teachers, right now, we had, how many teachers? Three, four teachers say that they are the union. They are the people who believe in these things. They tell you who they are. You just gotta trust them when they tell you who they are. That's who they are. Alright, uh, almost through, almost through. Got a few more. Stick with me on this. I see people popping on and popping off, but uh, make sure and share and like and subscribe wherever you're watching this from. Alright, and comment when you get an opportunity like Jess did.
I'm a language arts teacher and an avid reader. I love that books force you to imagine plots and characters and they go on to live with you after you put books down. But recently my daughter was assigned a book and innocently opened it to page seven where she, where it read, "Hey you, I knew your mother. Did you know that? I knew her real good. I took her from behind by the creek over there. What a tight little sugary C-U-N-T she had." That was page seven. Her teacher had given her no heads up, so she Googled the plot and decided she could not study it. She was told that the book had a difficult chapter, but it would be skipped. Have you ever handed a kid a book and told them not to read a part of it? Spoiler alert, they do. By the way, other teachers did not skip it and played an audible version of a very descriptive rape in their class, and this rape is central to the story. I didn't get your permission to read it to you, so I will not expose you to the imagery that goes on in my mind since I did read it. It goes on to include an attempted suicide. Parents were never warned, never asked to discuss this with their students, never given an option to skip it. So most of us never knew the images being put into our students' heads. And the thoughts and feelings that they may have struggled with are sorting out rapes and suicide attempts. Great job, district. And it's been going on for years because members of this board approved this book to be in their hands. Why do we settle for this? Why do we want this for our kids? This book should be on library shelves and sold on Amazon, but it shouldn't be in our classrooms. If it was shown as a video the way it is written, it would be distribution of child porn. Good job.
Yeah, that was in our school, in one of our schools here at the district. And um, you know, I, this is, I'm gonna go back to my earlier um, discussion where I talked about why we think it's important or why I think it's important that we have Christians on the school board. Now, again, if we had a, a Jewish person, person, a, a Muslim person, a, what else is out there? A Presbyterian, I'm not sure, a Catholic, um, that held true to good morals and uh, common sense as to what is appropriate for children, this kind of stuff wouldn't happen. That is what's important. And I, we're not trying to make public schools into Christian schools or Jewish schools or Muslim schools. We're trying to make the schools adequate for good quality learning, good quality morals, and good sound common sense teaching. That's what we want. And that is not. And it's not burning books when we don't allow it. And the number of people get up there and say, oh, you guys are for burning books. We never said to burn any book. As the, as the speaker just said, she goes, it belongs on Amazon. You can maybe sell that book wherever you want. But it's not a book that we get assigned to from a teacher. And, and she says, the teacher said, skip that chapter, or she could have said, she didn't. I don't know. She did. She might have. Um, but how ridiculous. This is, this craziness. I was a sex crimes detective at Anaheim Police Department and like she said, I would arrested somebody for distributing pornography to a child. An adult giving a child pornography is against the law. And here it's happening in our school. It's one of the most ridiculous things, in addition to a couple of most ridiculous things that is happening at our school right now. So I'm gonna continue with these. I'm gonna move through them pretty quickly. Got four more. Stick with me. Um, here we go.
Who do you represent? Do you represent all of your constituents or just the ones who look like you, think like you, and pray like you? There have been posts and videos by some of you, some of your constituents and some candidates running for school board that tell me that my senior at Yorbalinda High School and I do not fit the mold of those that you represent. We are Jews. We are not conservative Christians. We may look like you, but we do not pray like you and we don't think like you. But as trustees for this district, you are supposed to represent us, all of us, because we live in Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District. Your job is to choose the best curriculum for all the students, not a curriculum that fits your own ideological views. There are posts from your supporters celebrating a potential conservative Christian majority on the board. Well, if you want a Christian education, go to a Christian school. Just like if I expected a Jewish education for my kids, I would send them to a Jewish school. This is a public school district and religious ideologies do not belong anywhere in our classrooms or in the curriculum. Thank you.
Well, the last thing she said was correct, but everything else was nonsense. Um, I don't know who this woman is, but she's obviously never taken the time to actually listen or watch. And this is one of the problems uh, that I have uh, come to learn uh, since doing um, you know, video uh, all the way back. I've been doing this for 25 years. I've had other shows mostly on dog training and uh, wellness. Um, two separate, not dog wellness. Well, I did do some dog wellness stuff, but um, people will see a title of something or they'll hear from somebody, hey, did you hear that guy? And then they'll go spout something off that's not true, but they never actually hear what it is they say. Um, I would challenge this woman to tell me, uh, again, and I'm assuming she's a woman, uh, is that you need, alright, I would hope that you could, uh, what's the best way for me to put this? Cause I don't want to act like I'm commanding anybody to do anything, cause people get so offended these days. That show me where it is that, and I would assume that she's probably talking about myself or uh, Todd or Rich or Leandra or whoever else does these things. Karen, I think sometimes does them. Uh, show me the video where we said that you don't belong, that uh, your kind, whoever says that stuff. It, again, this is, is just such nonsense that I've, I, I cannot, I can't believe this. Uh, we've had a couple and now I'm friends with a couple of people that used to be on the, what we would call the other side of this discussion, where they say, um, you know, I, I, cause I get sent stuff all the time, in private postings that they say, you know, that I'm a whatever. Uh, I can't think of the name of what I was called before, a douchebag. Um, and Lord of the Douchebags and all this kind of stuff. And then, um, then I reach out to that person and they go, well, I was just told that you were, or I just heard that you say these things or you believe these things. I said, well, do you want to meet? And we'll talk. And then by the end we would talk, I go, they go, oh, I, 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 I thought, I, I believe these things and it turns out that they're not true. Oh, and it's just like this. And again, I, I would be, I would challenge the woman uh, to show me the clips where any of those people, if they did, then I, I will make sure that they correct the record, that uh, no, at no time has anybody or does anybody ever believe that. I know of that any, that some certain um, uh, religion or race or I don't care what it is, as long as it's a human being, that, that they don't belong in our schools. Everybody belongs in our schools. And again, equality, most importantly, inequality. They all get taught the same quality. We want quality, which we don't have currently at our schools. We want there to be quality teaching for everyone on an equal plane. And we don't want to reduce grades based on color. We don't want to reduce grades based on um, uh, somebody being oppressed or an oppressor. We don't want to change anything. We don't want to have separate graduations as they do in some stupid schools, which is just freaking nonsense. We have never, ever, ever said that we want to turn the schools into Christian schools or Jewish schools or Muslim schools. Nobody's ever said that. Show me where it has been said and stop getting up there and speaking nonsense that is simply not true without supportive information. Who is it? You didn't give any names. It, it can't be me, cause I know that I've never said that. So it must be somebody else. Show me who it is that has said that you don't belong. Your child doesn't belong at Yorbalinda High School. Tell me who that is. I will have a discussion with him and I will say, hey, you don't belong, that person, whoever said this, because they don't belong. That, that is a, a, a Marxist communist socialist thing to say that somebody doesn't belong. We would never say that. Would never say it. It's just, that's crazy. It's so crazy. Sorry, I get all heated. Alright, let's see. I don't know. Now they're out of, I don't have these ones titled, cause I had to load them after, cause I was limited by the number I could load before the show started. So I'm sorry. I'm not sure which one's next, but we'll bring it up. Uh, Zina says, you need to run for board member handy. Well, uh, I live currently in Leander Blades area, so I, I would never run against her ever. Um, unless she changes, which I don't see her changing. But thank you, Zina. I really do appreciate that. Um, and I, and I may be, my, my position might be better held doing something that I'm doing now. I'm, I'm not sure, but uh, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
My name is Bryant. Um, I did K-312 uh, in this district. A couple of years ago, I went to the 50th anniversary of elementary school, which was Van Buren. And you know, I just was remembering back on the great teachers I had there. I think of Mrs. Porter, Mrs. Davidson, um, two uh, team teachers, Pando and Tate. And it was good to actually see Mr. Tate there. And they were tough academically, but they were very kind. Um, I, I love them as teachers. But you know, one thing I, that I never knew about them was their politics. And that's in sharp contrast to the experience that um, my daughter had last year in her history class especially. And you know, it was really every day of the week that, in this case, it was left wing politics was brought into the classroom, um, including being taught that Abraham Lincoln was a Democrat, but that was just misinformation. Um, and so here, here's my um, encouragement, I guess, for, for parents, you know, dig in. Make sure you know what is going on in the, in the class with your kids. And then I guess my question for the, the board is, you know, what are you gonna do about this? Like this is, this is terrible to me. Like in terms of, I guess, my experience or even my AP government uh, teacher as a senior at Valencia, Mr. Boehner, we had no clue what he, you know, what his politics were. Um, and so yeah, I guess my, my question for the board is, you know, what are you gonna do about that? Thank you.
Yeah, he's a hundred percent correct. It's, I, and none of my teachers that I know of, and I'm sure is maybe one or two of them that I remember may have been um, gay on one way, one other direction or the other, where there was a man that was attracted to man or a woman who was attracted to women. But we never knew that. You know, you can always have your assumptions based on, you know, uh, uncertain mannerisms or how they dressed or what have you. But they never came out and said, you know, talked about who they had sex with. They didn't talk about who they voted for. They didn't, we didn't know what their politics were. They taught what it is that was necessary for us to learn how to, and again, I say this a hundred times and I know, but I'm sorry, but they taught us the, the true history of our country, good and bad. They taught the good and, and true history of our world. They taught us how to read, how to write, how to count and how to think. That was it. And um, there may have been a few out um, left leaning or even right leaning teachers that maybe went a little bit too far here and there, but not like it is today. This is, we are in a very weird and odd place right now with our teachers and I agree with them a hundred percent, that what are you gonna do about it? Uh, school district and school board. We can email you. You don't return our emails. You have a person uh, who returns some of the emails, which is none of the people that, she's not a person that we voted for. Um, and she's not a person that is in charge of our schools directly. She is a PR person. We, I don't need a reply from a PR person. I need to know what our school board members think when I send an email and I need to know what the superintendent thinks when I send them an email. But we, we never uh, get replies. Uh, never is a strong word. We hardly ever get replies from the people that we intend uh, to get reply from when we send those emails. What are you gonna do about it? Uh, we can ask you and send you, I, you know, I pretty much just stopped sending emails. Sometimes they'll send an email just so you can, um, I, I know that there's other people that read the emails. I've been told. And so sometimes I send them knowing that there are people that are gonna see it, that need to see it. And um, and, and so there is, there's that. That uh, I, I make sure and do that. So send the emails. I'm not telling you not to send emails, parents that are listening, uh, because you be kind of, I think you may be surprised at where your emails go. They read them. They are just not gonna respond because they don't want to commit um, to anything um, that um, you know, that they'll have to follow through with. Uh, we have a lot of nonsense going on. To hear those teachers at the beginning that I played all those videos of telling you how great things are and how wonderful things are, they are lying to you. And when they say that they are the union, they are the union. They are the people that are harming our children and uh, doing nothing for our kids. Alright, two more videos. And these are important, so stick around, especially the last one's important to me. Alright, here's one more. And I forget what this one is, so let's listen and then we'll respond after.
And Pat, Patricia Hanzo. And we have some seats up in front, so if you want to come up ahead of time, that's fine too.
So to that Kramer teacher, you're right. It doesn't matter how they identify, but they shouldn't be told that they need to identify or suggested that they need to identify as a certain pronoun. My daughter, first year at El Dorado, was given a paper on her first day of school, asked what her pronouns are. And it was through a conversation with a teacher here, actually, when we were talking about this, she said on her paper, she says, what's something that I should know about you? Wouldn't that be a more normal question than what are your pronouns? We don't need to tell kids that they need a certain pronoun. They can be whoever they want, but if they have something they want to share with the teacher, they can share it in that very appropriate spot. We need to move away from like encouraging this crap. Next, I want to talk about the gym at El Dorado. We spent a ton of money upgrading the filtration systems, the air conditioner and all that. And our main gym at El Dorado, where the girls volleyball has to play and practice, has no air conditioner. It was 105 in the gym last week. They had to move practice. They actually allowed them to play in the smaller air conditioned gym one night because it was 105. It was a hundred and five in the gym last week. They had to move practice. They actually allowed them to play in the smaller air-conditioned gym one night because it was a hundred and five. Um, our assemblies have to get moved because of the heat. We have no air conditioning in there. Why did we spend all of this money on stuff we didn't need and our gym is so, so hot? Equity. And what's the update on the lights? How's that going with Aldo? Our poor school is like super rundown. You guys talk about how great it is, all these things getting fixed and we have no air conditioner and we have no lights in our fields. Football got moved back a couple of hours. Luckily they're in the fall and that can happen. Soccer, that can never happen. Our games get shut, cut short because it's in the winter when we don't have the sun out. We can't play in the dark.
Yeah, I love it when she speaks. She does an amazing job. Always look forward to hearing what she has to say. Uh, her kids go to the same school, uh, my teenagers go to, they go to Eldorado. And yes, it's, it's crazy how much money this school has and they still do nothing uh, for, um, the gym and the stadium. It's crazy. We have one of the greatest sporting, uh, high schools, sports high schools. I don't know how to say that. Um, a high school that has some great sports. And they don't have lights at the, at the field. They, they have lacrosse, they have football, they have soccer, they have, uh, girls lacrosse. They have, uh, what else they have on that field? They have a couple of different things. And it's, it has no, has no lights. It is so crazy that you put in, at Valencia, in the middle of a residential area, has, has a fantastic stadium. They put it in the middle of a residential area, but, uh, Eldorado, which is off of Valencia there, which is, um, you know, a little bit more of a thoroughfare and only has one residential area on, on the one side. And there, there's some argument by some one person saying, hey, we don't want the stadium there. You haven't figured out how to get around that or make sure that it happens for, um, the, the needs of the kids who, and the parents that have to drive back and forth and then we have to drive from, from, uh, from wherever we live to pick them up at Eldorado and drive them to another location there at Bradford Stadium? This is the craziest thing. Um, and, uh, so she's right. She's a hundred percent right. Sorry, I can go on with this whole thing, but I'm gonna, I wanna get to this last video. This last video is a woman that I love and I, and her and I, her and I have talked on occasion. And I'm, I'm just so, so sad, um, that she feels the way that she does and, and has the experiences seemingly that she says that she has. And I wanna play it because I think that we all need to understand that there's people that are having difficulty for whatever reason. And, um, I just need to know if anybody knows, you know, what's happening in her world that we can support her in. Uh, I, I don't, I don't understand, cause I, I don't see it. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about it after this video, but, uh, just listen what she has to say.
I wasn't gonna come tonight, but a community member whom many of you know was live streaming the meeting. Um, and I would like to ask that our special meetings and our emergency meetings are livestreamed the same way that our regular meetings are. I came here tonight because I wanted to say thank you to our administrators, our two moderate, uh, board members, and our incredible P Y L U S D teachers for seeing my children, for seeing my biracial children. I wanna thank you. I wanna thank the administration for recognizing diversity holidays every month. I wanna thank you for making me feel like a part of this community when there are members of this community who, I don't know what they want. I don't know what they want. I think they want me to move away. And I'm sorry that my presence and my wants do not live up to what you expect for yourselves. But we are all different and we're all part of this community. I don't understand the end game. I don't understand the enmity. But I, I will live here for the rest of my life. My kids will be here for the rest of their school career. And I will continue to fight for them to be seen, for our curriculum to be diverse and representative of factual history, not what the daughters of the Civil War fought for. Our curriculum to look like in the early 1900s. So to our teachers once again, thank you, thank you for taking care of our kids and thank you to all of you for working so hard for them.
So the reason I played that is I wanna know who these people are that are attacking her and making her feel like she doesn't belong. I, I, I don't, I don't, I've never seen that in our community. Uh, and my wife is Persian, my daughter, my stepdaughter is Persian, my daughter. I'm Mexican. My kids, uh, have Hispanic blood in them, that they have blonde hair. Uh, and, and so we live in a, in a kind of a little mini world here of, uh, diversity. And I send my kids out telling them nothing. They're not different than anybody else. There, there's nothing, there's nothing that they should be ashamed of or worried about. Just go out into the world and have fun, enjoy life and if anybody says anything bad about you, who, it's, it's saying more about who they are, not who you are. Um, I, I've, uh, as a police officer, um, I mean, growing up, it didn't matter what job. I, I know there were times when I was called Mexican, wetback, uh, Beaner, um, a whole lot of names. But it never stopped me from even being friends of the people that use those slurs. Um, I, I can't tell you how many times as a police officer that a partner would say to me, hey, Mexican, go get me, um, a tow form so that I could tow this car. Or you fill it up, uh, Beaner, or what have you. And I just went on my way like, again, it says more about that person than it says about me. What do I care how they feel about me? So, uh, I don't, this, this, there's some aspects of this I don't understand and I, and I'm, I'm doing my best to understand. But with that being said, I don't see it in this community. I, I, it's not in, in my world now here where I've seen any of those things happen. I, I have friends, uh, I, I think I, I, earlier I mentioned a friend who I've developed who, who previously was a part of the group who would call me names, who I'm now friends with. And she is in a, uh, a bi-color, biracial relationship. Her husband is, uh, is black, she's white, and they have children that are mixed. And, um, we see each other at events now, uh, you know, uh, that she shows up to and we hug. We've had coffee together. Um, I saw her daughter at a place nearby and she was smiling and happy and, and with other kids of other colors of, of, from the cheerleading to, uh, my kids that were there. And we just all, nobody, it doesn't make any sense. I'm only bringing it up now as a, as a, as a time where we were together with biracial people only because I had to go back and think, wow, where was I where this was happening and nothing was happening? And those are times where I, I go, I don't see what she sees. It's, it's, I'm in the same community. And yet I don't understand the fear that she feels and who is it that's doing it? I, I, I've been at a meeting with her where she felt like she was being, uh, where she was scared. And I, and I, and I, although I put my arm around her or, you know, stood next to her and said, I'll be more than happy to walk you to your car if you're feeling that fearful. And again, as a police officer of 21 years, I know when somebody is in danger. I've seen the signs of, of, uh, you know, gang members and, and, and people that don't like other members of the community and, and know when something bad is about to happen. That has never been a situation that I found in a school board meeting in particular. Uh, these, this is when it was being held outside. And I assured her, I said, nobody's, nobody here is gonna hurt you. And I, and I, again, I know well enough not to make somebody feel like what they're saying is ridiculous or not real. But it, it was real enough to her, but I have to also say and ask, is it, is this something that we need to maybe have a discussion and say, maybe what you're feeling is just simply that that you need to have a discussion or have a talk with the other people that you feel are, um, uh, not happy with you or that are angry with you and you'll learn, just like I did with my friend who believed what she was being told that, um, maybe through some things that were being said, took it in a way that caused her anxiety. And once we talked, we found out that we have more in common than we have differences. I think the, really the only thing we have a difference, uh, in is on our belief on abortion, which again, is perfectly fine. That doesn't mean that I hate her because she has a different opinion. I still love her the same as if she had the same opinion, uh, and care about her and pray for her and her family. Um, her, her husband has a very dangerous job and I, um, I'm trying to not say too much because I, I don't know if she wants to know, wants me to say too much about it. But, um, I, I care about his safety and even asked, how are things going and how are they doing? And so these, this discussion that she just had or what she laid out there is so foreign to me that I, I want to know more. And so I'm, I'm just reaching out if any, if, if she wants to tell me who it is or where it is that she feels these pressures or this idea that people don't want her in the community, I would love to know. I would love to figure out how it is that I could make her feel more welcome. Um, if anybody knows an incident where she's been attacked or, uh, you know, verbally, I don't know that she's been ever physically attacked, but if she's ever been pressured or, um, somebody's said that we don't want you in this community anymore. Um, I would like to know where that is. I'm not the, the police of Yorbalinda or P Y L U S D. But I feel like that I am in a position where maybe I can cause a, a coming together and a better understanding of, of why she feels this way. Again, I live in this community. I have, I have a diverse family myself. We have never experienced it. I have friends that are in the same exact situation that she is and they've never shared with me that they feel like that they've been forced out of this community or are not wanted in this community. So I just, I just want to understand it. I wanna know. Uh, so if that's a possibility, if anybody knows, that would be fantastic. Um, if you, um, and I just don't wanna say your name because I'm not sure that you want me to, um, just let me know. Uh, if that's something that we can do, I would love to have coffee with you or whatever it is that you like to do. If it's have a smoothie or what have you, just have lunch, um, would love to do that. To, to make you feel more welcome. I, I, again, I don't understand. I don't know what it is that you're feeling. And of course people say, well, it's obvious. Well, no, it's not obvious. It's not. Um, because again, I have a, I would say a biracial or mixed, uh, diverse family myself and we have not had that experience. So, um, that, that's, I just wanted to end with that. And so help me understand. Um, cause that's not what we want in our community. I would love to change that and would love to, uh, have her not feel that way on a daily basis. All right, my friends, I know this is a very long show. It's a, an hour and 21 minutes. Um, but, um, please share it out to people so they can see what's happening in our school board and maybe it'll help with a, a better understanding that, uh, number one, as, uh, somebody who's Christian, we do not want to make all the schools Christian schools. We want them to be diverse. Schools that are full of equality. Uh, we do not like CRT or equity. That does not belong in our schools. Um, we want our skill, our, our teachers to, to, to not bow down to the teachers unions who want nothing but to, um, keep parents from being involved and bring in nonsense that does not belong in our schools. And, um, we think that, uh, we need some change in our school boards, uh, school board members. And I, I'll tell you this, one last thing. If, when, and if we can get Todd Frazier and Rich Engel selected into the school board, if you don't see a dramatic change in the quality of education, the, um, the, um, the finances of the, of what is in the schools being spent on, on better programming for our children and you don't see, um, the grades, uh, come up, which is not gonna be hard, right? We just need to, we just need to change a few things probably, uh, and start and just educate the kids. Uh, bring those grades up to a, a higher level that we could very, very quickly, uh, I'd say, I would say, give it two to three years. That's quickly, I think. Um, uh, give us two to three years, uh, with these new school board members to bring those grades up that we could be one of the strongest, most, um, uh, serious schools. Not only in California, but in the United States and, and be an example of what a school district could be if you have parents that are involved and, and teachers that are, uh, back to educating our kids and not indoctrinating our kids and school board members that care about where the money actually goes and get these teachers unions out of, um, our school district and, and less involved in what is happening in our schools. If, if you could do that, if you could get these two gentlemen elected, I will, I, if it, it doesn't happen, I will do something. I don't know, shave my head and, um, walk uh, and, and sell my car. No, that's, that's, that's too drastic. Shave my head, shave my eyebrows and my head. How about that? Uh, if, if, if it doesn't happen, I'm telling you, I, I could almost guarantee it. I could guarantee it when we have an attorney, a CPA, a police officer, a fireman. Uh, we'll be stuck with Maryland for a little while, but maybe we can get somebody else in a couple of years, uh, voted in. And we can make some dramatic changes in the school. We need to get rid of the old, which has been around far too long and bring in some new and change the school district for the positive, get back to educating our kids and stop indoctrinating them. All right, that's it. I'm gonna sign off now. All right, my friends. Love you guys. God bless. Take care. Bye.